All right, good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education, regular meeting to order. It is 5:30 on July 7th. As a reminder, attendance will be strictly limited to no more than 10 people, which is recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The general public will have the option to view remotely via live streaming on Roku, Apple TV, and online at nhchtv.wordpress.com. Ms. Adams, would you please call the roll?
Lisa Eastep?
Here.
David Wortman?
Here.
Stephanie Adams? Ms. Adams? Ms. Stephanie Adams? Nelson Bollier?
Here.
Judy Justice?
Here.
Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Rivenbark?
Here.
Is Ms. Adams here?
Ms. Adams? We do have a quorum though.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would like everyone to stand for the invocation, a moment of reflection, and then stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands the nation under God, in the business of the Constitution of the United States of America. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda, Mr. Bollier.
There's a motion.
Second, Mr. Rivenbark.
There's a motion and a second.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams? Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice? Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark?
Aye.
Motion passes six nothing. Item three, closed session. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-31811A1, A3, and A6, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to consider personnel matters, and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records, North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 and 321, and of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
Move to close session pursuant to the statutes, Mr. Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
There's a motion and a second.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark?
Aye.
Motion passes seven nothing. We are now in closed session. We will be back no later than 6:30. We are back in open session. Ms. Adams, would you please take roll?
Lisa Eastep?
Here.
David Wortman?
Here.
Stephanie Adams?
Here.
Nelson Bollier?
Here.
Judy Justice?
Here.
Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Rivenbark?
Here.
All right, thank you. Item number four, approval of the minutes. Item A, interim meeting minutes. We've got two, I believe. January 28th interim meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Well, if it's okay with the board, we'll take both of these at the same time. Is there a motion to approve the January 28th interim meeting minutes and the June 16th?
Move to approve both sets of minutes, Mr. Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Jeanette Nichols.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Adams? Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams? Ms. Adams? Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
All right, motion passes seven nothing. Item B, regular meeting minutes for May 5th and June 2nd. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes, Mr. Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Wait, is June 2nd, are those minutes, or is that just the agenda? Looks like the agenda.
Excuse me?
The June 2nd, okay, never mind, sorry. I'm talking to myself up here, sorry. All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark?
Aye.
Motion passes seven nothing. Item C, special meeting minutes. We have three sets of minutes from June 23rd, June 27th, and June 29th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from those dates?
Move to approve, Mr. Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Bill Rivenbark.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark?
Aye.
Motion passes seven nothing. Item five, information. Item A, policies for first reading. Ms. Nichols?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we're in the process of a complete revision of our policy manual, so therefore, we have quite a few policies to look at for first reading, and Mrs. Stagner is going to help with the explanation. We'll start with Policy Code 2000. Ms. Stagner, would you like to share any information about this policy?
As board members are aware, the North Carolina School Boards Association has been providing guidance and sample policies that the policy committee has been considering and going through in detail. I'm sure that you've all had a chance to review these. These are the 2000 series policies, which, my camera so you can see me, the 2000 series policies which govern the board's, sort of the board's own operations and governance. And so, I think many of them are self-explanatory. I'd be happy to answer specific questions. Ms. Nichols, I do have, I believe that Policy 2130 was, I have in my notes that that was going to be held, not go forward.
Right, we're not going to discuss it. We won't get to that point. We'll just, we'll take care of it, okay?
And so.
I don't think Mrs. Adams had a chance to delete that before the meeting started.
Right, so, but the other ones are, and we'll just use the first one, 2100, you know, as a board member legal status. This is, this is just a very basic policy that talks about board members' authority. You have authority only when acting together as a board in a legally called session, and that board members don't have that authority of the board to act individually. And so, there are a series of policies that talk about sort of the function of the board, the status of the board, the goals, and the operations of the board, and the governance of the board, and that's what these policies consist of.
Thank you. In Policy Code 2010, Board and Superintendent Relations, you can see the basis of this policy, when it comes on, that, this came from the School Board Association, but that in red is some of the information that was taken from our policy. So, you'll want to review that very carefully. And give us any comments that you think, anything that we've left out or you would like to see deleted. Ms. Stagner, do you have anything you want to add on this policy?
Now, again, this is an area where there are some legal obligations and requirements for the superintendent and the relationship with the board, but there is also certainly areas for customization and so that the policy suits the board's needs and desires for governing that relationship. And so, this has been customized a fair amount.
And our references have been updated, the legal references. So, that's important as well. The next policy, 2100, Board Member's Legal Status. I think this one is a new policy that was recommended for us. Is that correct, Mrs. Stagner?
Yes, again, this is the one I was just mentioning a moment ago that talks about the status of the board and individual board members. I don't know. I think that the School Boards Association was attempting to cross-reference if there were other policies or reference the former policies of the New Hanover County Board, but this one is one that was new, doesn't have a predecessor in your old policy manual. You'll see cross-references to policies that are other School Board Association policies that may not have been adopted yet.
Yes. The next one, Board Member Elections, Policy 2110. This, again, has a lot of new information. I think it's relevant and will help previous, I mean, former members of the board.
And if I might, this one is, this is a policy that most every board will have, but it has to be customized to match your specific form of elections. And there's a general statute that deals with how school boards are elected, but many, many school boards across the state have local legislation that govern their elections, and so, it's important to check that, and we did. I actually had some conversations with McKenna from the School Boards Association about making sure that this was, was correct in light of your very unique set of election laws for the New Hanover County School Board.
The next one certainly falls in line, yeah, question? Falls in line with the election, unexpired term fulfillment. This is Policy Code 2115. And again, this certainly does follow the guidelines that we've been using.
And again, this was one that is governed specifically by your session laws, and you'll see that's been added in red there to match the local legislation that governs this board.
And the legal reference is updated. Removal from Office, Policy Code 2116. And I don't know that we had this one before.
Probably should have.
So, we want to make sure we read carefully all of these policies. The next one, Board Member Conflict of Interest, Policy Code 2121. And it's quite involved.
This, this is an important policy because it does, the statutes governing conflict of interest are actually have criminal penalties, criminal penalties. And so, this is a policy that's certainly very critical for all elected officials, including school board members, to be familiar with and aware of, and understand the limitations and concerns about behavior and dealing with contracts and other conflicts.
So, that one we'll study very carefully. Role of Board Member in Handling Complaints, 2122. That, again, we've incorporated our policy with a basic policy. Ms. Stagner, you want to share anything on that one?
No, I mean, I think this is something that certainly board members frequently, you get phone calls from constituents or parents, and there are concerns or complaints, and this, this guides the board members as to how to direct those to the administration. There's certainly a desire, I think, expressed in the policy, that those complaints are handled close to the level of, you know, as close to the level of, you know, for example, at the school level or superintendent level, where it's appropriate to deal with it. And so, again, this adds some from your previous policy and is in the format of the School Board Association policy.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Opportunities for Development, 2123, Policy Code.
This, this really reiterates your obligation to fulfill your training requirements as a board member.
And I think we are doing that best we can. Confidential Information, Policy Code 2125, 7315.
Obviously, we have personnel records and student records that are protected by state law for, for both, and student records also. Federal law protects the confidentiality of those, and it is important as board members, you have access to that information in closed session, at hearings, et cetera. And it's important to remember, again, this is a policy that sets out that board members will, will respect that, and also, it has a coordinate policy and other, this, this policy will show up also in the 7000s for staff members, because employees also need to respect those confidentiality requirements.
So, when you see two numbers up there, it tells you that you'll see it again in a different format or different information, but it's related to the same topic.
Yeah, the same policy will show up in two different portions of the policy manual.
Board Member Technology Use, Policy Code 2127. This one is quite involved, takes a lot of referring to, and we only changed, well, took a lot from the School Board Association, but on page four of five, we made a change there, just taking off our social, our official websites, and not listing individual accounts.
If I recall, Ms. Nichols, this, this policy had, there was quite a bit of discussion around this, and if I recall, McKenna said this was a new policy for the School Boards Association. There have frequently been, you know, historically been policies regarding staff and student use of technology, and this really parallels that for school board members, when you, you should be using school system emails, you have public records issues for doing school business that should be done on school technology, or school technology being hardware or software.
And 2130 was tabled at the policy committee meeting, so we will not review that one tonight. If you want to look at it, though, there's a lot in there that's quite different, so you might want to think about it, but we'll bring it to you at our next meeting. And the last policy, Defense of Board Members and Employees, 2140, and then the 7610. Ms. Stagner?
I believe this was another policy where you had, the School Boards Association policy provided for, it was a defense of board employees. They've added board members to this policy, so you'll see it again in 7610. And this is just spelling out when the board as an entity might provide defense in a litigation or criminal civil litigation or, or other action brought against a particular individual person.
So, those are the policies that we are offering for your review, and we'll bring them back for second reading the next board meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mrs. Stagner.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols, thank you, Ms. Stagner. Item B, renaming Parsley Elementary School. This has my name after it, but it's really a full board discussion. So, the question has come up about, about Parsley Elementary in regards to the greater discussion that has, has gone on, really, in the United States and across the world about just how are we about, about equity, about, about our history? And the question arose about specifically this school, but certainly, I think it would lead to a greater discussion about, maybe overall, examining any, any structure that we have that has a name attached to it, but that's probably for another day. But in particular, about Parsley, Parsley is named Walter L. Parsley. And so, we have some questions regarding who the school is actually named after. And so, I think that's the discussion before this board. There, one of the original nine from the 1898 riots was named Walter L. Parsley. And there is some question about whether or not this school was named after that person, or he was named after a subsequent grandson. And so, I think that the board wishes to explore that question, and then decide what is the mechanism for renaming. And I would welcome any discussion or any additions to that perspective. So, board members?
Madam Chair, I definitely appreciate the opportunity to discuss this, this evening. I'm sure there's a lot of opinion out there, but just to start us off, for me personally, I think it is important to explore how best and how quickly we can change this name. Regardless of which Walter L. Parsley it is, I feel like at this point, it would be impossible to distinguish Walter L. Parsley, the person indicated in the state report in 2018, who's involved, intimately involved in the 1898 massacre, from any other Walter L. Parsley. So, I just feel very strongly that the time has come to, to change that name as quickly as possible.
So, we have some supporting documents here that I asked Mr. Anderson to, to provide, and I think Ms. Adams as well. We have the original, I think, Offer to Purchase and Contract, and we have the deed, I believe. And Ms. Stagner also took a look at that information. At the very bottom, if you look, on the original, let's see, on the original Offer to Purchase and Contract, it does say, the very last line, "At the request of the New Hanover County Board of Education, the school will be named Walter, Walter L. Parsley Elementary School, because of his generosity in making the land available to the community." Doesn't make it very clear on whether that is a contingency of the sale. It also does not make it clear who it's named after.
I mean, I think it's important to do the due diligence to see who exactly it is named after, because there are two different people from very different generations. So, I appreciate the fact that we're going to look into that to hopefully contact the family to see exactly who that school is actually named after.
I think the second part of this is, what is the mechanism for renaming? And I think that is something that, Ms. Nichols, your policy committee is going to be taking up this month?
Yes.
And that would potentially be ready for the board to consider for the August meeting.
Yes, that is correct.
So, if the board does decide to rename Parsley Elementary, that is something that we would potentially have a pathway to do in August. So, this is on, for consideration, just for information, I'm sorry, for this meeting, but...
Hey, Lisa?
Yes, sir?
I, I think G says, "At the request of New Hanover County Board of Education, the school will be named Walter L. Parsley Elementary School because of his generosity..."
Correct.
"...in making the land available." And he's been dead for 75 years.
I believe at one point, there was something on the website of the school. Mr. Anderson, can you correct me if I'm wrong on that?
No, that's correct.
So, what did, what did the information on the website say?
The, the information on the website and the information that is also, I think it's still present in the school, showing the history of the school, showing, in my recollection, in negotiating the deal with the Parsley family, that, that Mr. Parsley at the time wanted the school named after his grandfather.
On the website?
Well, the, the history of the school was on the website, and it was removed when we transitioned to a more standardized sites for all schools. It was also posted in the entryway of the, of Parsley Elementary School, and I'm not sure, but I believe it's still posted with a picture of Mr. Parsley in the old schoolhouse.
And I'm sorry to clarify, when you say Mr. Parsley, would that be Mr. Parsley of 1898?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are you reporting those discussions then, so you remember this, from your memory?
Yes, I know that Mr. Parsley that I met and negotiated the land purchase with did not want the school named after him. He wanted the school named after his grandfather.
Yeah, that is, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, was there any difference in the price?
No, sir. This actually came... No, sir. This actually came, I think, when you say the generosity in making the land available to the community, it was much more than just making the land available at that point in time for purchase, but there's a lot of history with that piece of property. The Parsley family had made the land available to the Masonboro community to construct, build, and utilize the two-room schoolhouse on that site for years and years. Later on, the same site had baseball fields that the community used. So there's a long history of the Parsley family allowing that property to, you know, to be used by the community, to be used for schools. And I think, you know, when we approached the family about purchasing it for an elementary school, I think that tied into the history and was one of the reasons they agreed to sell. But that was not a condition that there was no value in the naming. It was something that the board, as I recall, it was a recommendation of the board. And that's, and the Parsley family agreed to it.
Dr. Anderson, would you recommend us changing the name of that school without contacting the Parsley family?
Well, I think that, I think you can certainly contact the family. As far as changing a name, I don't have a recommendation.
But I mean, but changing it from the name it is now, I wouldn't want to do it without telling them that we were going to do it.
But you're saying it was a board decision? This was something that the board at the time was directing, not the other way around?
Yeah, it was, I mean, this says, "At the request of New Hanover County Board of Education." And as I recall, because of the community, because of the community use and the history of the site, it was something that the board wanted to do at the time.
All right. Are there any other questions?
I would just offer further, I think, you know, as an entity, meeting the moment and doing something that I just think is really appropriate, I think that'd be a big thing. I think that that's an important thing, and certainly no disrespect to that family. I just think that this is something that we should really work toward considering in August.
That'll be plenty of time to get over with the family. I'll get over with it, and nobody else will. I'd just like for them to know that we were going to do it. I'd hate for something to be named after my granddaddy and ride by there one day and they changed the name of it.
Oh, yeah, it'd be respectful, for sure, to anybody's family.
Absolutely. It's just about respect. Judy, that's exactly right.
So is there any objection to any board member if there is an attempt to contact the family? Okay, so we will look to tackle this in August. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other questions about this item from the board? Thank you. Item C, 2020-21 School Year Opening Update. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening, as an information-only item, we're going to provide an update to the board and the community as to the work that's being done, that is required to be done by the Strong Schools NC Public Health Toolkit from the Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Public Instruction. Although Governor Cooper will ultimately determine under which Plan A, B, or C, school districts in North Carolina open for the 2020-2021 school year, all districts are required to develop three plans, Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C. For this opening, we have to adhere to the requirements from the Department of Health and Human Services and also consider their recommendations. Briefly, Plan A would be that school facilities are open and all students are present at the same time. There are enhanced health protocols required, and also we consider those recommended by DHHS. Teaching and learning is traditional in nature with preparation to occur for blended learning, which involves face-to-face as well as the use of technology. Plan B requires that school facilities are open, but we're limited to no greater than 50% maximum occupancy. We have enhanced protocols that are required and recommended in Plan A, and we have increased requirements. So Plan B has all of the requirements of Plan A plus additional protocols with a limited number of students able to be in attendance for face-to-face instruction. And finally, Plan C, there are no students in school facilities and remote learning occurs for all students, which is, in effect, the plan that we followed for the last few months of the past school year. So in essence, New Hanover County Schools has developed a plan and implemented the requirements for Plan C. We did that as we closed the school year. And as I just shared, Plan B includes and expands the requirements of Plan A. As a result, our focus for the past few weeks has been to consider what might be required and what New Hanover County Schools can do for Plan B going forward. And as a reminder, again, New Hanover County Schools will not make the decision to open with all students present, some students present, or no students present. The governor will make that determination at some point in the coming weeks. A press conference was held recently, and the governor addressed the matter and indicated that he would be making a decision in the coming weeks. To help organize our work, we put together work groups, and a lead, or actually leads, they're pairs, for each of the work groups are listed in the item this evening. It's been clear that there are many, many questions that arise due to the complex nature of providing face-to-face instruction to limited numbers of students in schools maintaining social distance and the 50% of maximum occupancy. We started with some essential questions to be considered by each group, and they are listed under the groups. What we found quickly is that the work of each group is highly interdependent upon other groups. And that makes the complexity even greater as we tried to develop and continue to work to develop a plan. This evening, each of the groups, teaching and learning, operations, health, finance, communication, are going to provide an update for you. We'll begin with teaching and learning. LaShawn Smith, Dawn Brinson are the leads. And they will talk with you about the work that's been done. A linchpin for the work of all the groups because of the interdependency is the determination of a schedule that will allow us to feasibly bring in a limited number of students with less than the information that we'd like to have. As a result, there were several scenarios that were developed by the work group. They have been vetted, considered, discussed for many, many hours. And included is a copy of the three scenarios that the number that was initially developed has been reduced to. With a recommendation, we have to start somewhere for consideration. This evening, no action is being requested, and in order to give the board time to consider, ask questions, you have three scenarios with one recommended. And throughout the presentations, you'll have information presented as to why one scenario and not another has been considered. So I would ask Dr. Smith and Ms. Brinson, if they would please, to provide the first update on teaching and learning related to Plan B implementation.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Burns. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, board members, and those who are present viewing at home. The teaching and learning work group was tasked with collaboratively working to develop school opening scenarios, as Dr. Burns shared, for Option B for the New Hanover County Schools' opening plan. The work group was led by Dawn Brinson and myself, and members of the work group included the directors of elementary, secondary, special education, and early childhood education, along with the directors of transportation and technology. A representative from finance was present, along with principals at all levels, and additional members representing professional development, digital teaching and learning, and special education. We began our work with a guiding question. Are we building this to return to an existing system? Or are we reimagining this for a new reality? We discussed what were the disruptions to student learning, as well as what were the opportunities for enhancing further student experiences. We agree that our instructional goals as a system had not changed. We were still focused on high-quality curriculum, ensuring that teachers had the knowledge, skills, and abilities to effectively teach all students, and ensuring that students were engaged in high-quality learning activities. And that it would be important to acknowledge the fears of our teachers, families, and administrators associated with opening schools this way. We all agree that a big fear was, of course, the unknown. Our work group was informed by a principal survey that helped us to better understand administrator priorities. We also briefly discussed that regardless of the scenario selected, it was likely we would have to reimagine what services we would need to provide to students with the new requirements related to social distancing. After giving consideration to all the above mentioned, we began to generate scenarios for operating, excuse me, for opening schools under Option B. At one point, we had at least nine different scenarios. At this time, Ms. Brinson, we'll overview with you our top three scenarios.
After our initial discussion and creation of scenarios, we implemented a four-way test for implementation. This allowed the committee to take a second look at the options and narrow from nine to three. Our four-way test of implementation consisted of, what was the best fit for students, putting students first? What was the best fit for families? Allows for the fewest plan-to-plan transitions from A to B to C back to whatever way the governor moves us. And then, logistically, will we be able to implement the plan? And that was a huge undertaking, to kind of think through all the logistics. So now let me review the three scenarios. So the first scenario, as for all pre-K students, all pre-K 12 students, excuse me, through 12 students will attend face-to-face instruction on alternating weeks. Students will be assigned to groups, one or two. Siblings will be in the same group. Groups will attend school in an ongoing rotation by attending school in person for one week and receiving online instruction the other. The district recognizes that there are some special education students for whom remote learning provides additional challenges. For these students, services will continue to be provided daily in the school building. Additionally, English learners in year two or less will attend daily. Full K-12 virtual school option will be provided for families who select home learning for their students. Scenario two, all pre-K 12 students will attend face-to-face instruction on an alternating three-week schedule. Students will be assigned to groups one, two, or three. Siblings will be in the same group. Groups will attend school on an ongoing rotation by attending school in person for one week and receiving online instruction for two weeks. The district recognizes that there are some special education students for whom remote learning provides additional challenges. For those students, services will continue to be provided daily in the school building. Additionally, English learners in year two or less will attend daily. Full K-12 virtual school option will be provided for families who selected home learning for their students. Scenario three, all pre-K three students through grades three, students and English learners in year two or less will attend face-to-face instruction daily. Additionally, the district recognizes that there are some special education students for whom remote learning provides additional challenges. For those students, services will continue to be provided daily in the school building. Students in grades four through 12 will be assigned to a group either one, two, or three. Siblings will be in the same group. Groups will attend school in an ongoing rotation by attending school in person for one week and receiving online instruction for the other two. Full K-12 virtual school option will be provided for families who select home learning for their students. The committee recognized that all students having an opportunity for face-to-face instruction was a priority. They saw the importance of that, but that some families may not be ready for face-to-face, so the virtual option was also necessary. Being conservative to begin with, and then possible changes as we assess and move throughout the school year, was also a consensus. That's what brought us to the Scenario Two option. Allowed for all students to receive some face-to-face, recognizing that there are some students who probably need more face-to-face or who have a harder time learning online, and then allowing everybody to get that opportunity for rotating in and out. It also allows more flexibility, depending on not knowing how many students will show up. It allows for the social distancing within the classrooms, because you'll have fewer students. So students aren't going to be as contained to one small little area for an entire day.
Dawn?
Yes.
So there's going to be a situation probably where a teacher's going to have a class in front of her and then a class at the house, and she's teaching both of them?
That's a possibility, but remember, there's synchronous learning and then there's asynchronous learning. So just because there's a class virtually learning, students are learning virtually, doesn't necessarily mean that it's synchronous at the same time. Plus, there's other options that the schools can do. So let's say, depending on the number of kids that are there, there's four fourth-grade classes. There's enough students for two, so it may be two teachers handle face-to-face classes, the other two teachers handle the remote learning classes. It gives a lot more flexibility for principals in with the handling of their staffing.
Okay, thank you.
You recommending Scenario Two, is that what this is?
That is our recommendation to the board, yes, for consideration, but that will be...
I asked...
That would be, you're not voting today, though.
Were there teachers, classroom teachers in the groups, in your group?
There were no classroom teachers on our group, no.
Well, I have received a lot of feedback from teachers that are concerned about that. Did any, and I, you know, told them to call, but you know how that goes.
The principals that were on our group did reach out to their fellow principals, as well as reach out to their teachers, and brought back information.
It seems like there would have been value in having actual classroom teachers in this group, to me.
But this plan would give some flexibility to teachers who are not secure in coming face-to-face with the students in the building.
Yes, ma'am, it would.
Dawn, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
And I guess we're obviously looking at student safety, teacher safety, and all of that stuff. You know, obviously, it's an important thing to do. But doesn't, you know, childcare is a huge issue. I know that the... I know that the, the telephone call that, or the voicemail that was sent out, I've, I've already heard from five people that it was pretty confusing, saying that childcare was going to be taken care of. But doesn't this actually expose kids to more, more people? Because what we're doing is, is we're allowing them to go to school for one week, and then, from childcare perspective, they're going to daycare, or wherever it is, for another couple of weeks. Is there, it, it just seems that, and especially teachers with children, they're going to have the same issues in terms of childcare issues. Were these things that you all considered? I, I know the, and, and just, I'm sure you all considered this too, but the, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics just recommended less than a week ago that it's actually safer for kids to be in school at, at this point, looking at the emotional health, the physical health of those kids, instead of splitting them up or doing the remote learning. Because I think there had already been some evidence that the remote learning was not as successful a, as we would have liked to be. So are those things that you all considered in your work group, that, you know, those recommendations, and, and from a children's perspective, as well a teacher perspective for childcare?
Yes. Childcare was a discussion that we had multiple times, and at some length, both the childcare for our employees, as well as for the families. And we're trying to find an option that technically we could make work, you know, with the busing and everything, as well as, you know, try to get face-to-face time for all students. So we are trying to find the solution that we'd be able to, to manage and try to address most of the issues as, as possible. We did come up with and discuss some options for employees' kids, to see if there's something that we could do there. So it, it did come up. We do recognize, you know, the, the burden that, you know, parents have with childcare, and trying to address that. There's a lot of unknowns still, and until we can collect that information, it's, it's hard to, to kind of come up with the best solution that will satisfy, you know, the majority of the people. And we feel like Number Two will, with some modifications as time goes on, and as, as we kind of see how many students show up.
To that, to that point, I just had a question, well, two, actually. First, I would imagine that you feel confident and prepared to implement any of those three scenarios. You'd obviously recommend two, but am I correct in understanding that you could implement Scenario One and Scenario Three?
Mr. Bowler, let, let me respond to that, if I might. Any scenario under Plan B is going to be an incredible challenge to execute. The social distance requirement, and the impact on transportation, on how many students we can place in classrooms, if, and again, if Plan B is the plan that the governor decides we'll open under. And to the point about all kids coming, Plan A brings all kids back in with limited social distancing. Plan B, as we have worked through this, is going to present tremendous challenges, no matter how we address it logistically. Childcare is a, that's an issue. It's going to be an issue. And right now, regrettably, there's not a great answer to that. We have determined that each of those scenarios are feasible. We don't have enough information, and we likely will not have enough information for a good while, to know how many students and how many staff members are going to feel uncomfortable coming into a building, which limits what feasibly we might do. One of the considerations for Scenario Two is, by dividing the students who are coming into school for face-to-face into three groups, we should be able to manage the social distancing aspect, we should be able to manage the transportation aspect. The other ones, it's going to be an unknown. And so, given the number of unknowns, and the fact that we're going to have to get closer, and folks are going to have, we're going to have to have you know, does the governor decide Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C? We're looking at the simplest, most conservative way that we believe we can open. To say that all three of those are feasible, I would say yes to varying degrees. And, and there are, as you'll hear, as we go through, from operations and from health, and the questions that are being asked and the observations are right on point. They've been considered, and they continue to be considered. We have many more questions and answers. We are not alone. I have spoken with many superintendents in the last few weeks. Districts are struggling with this, even those who've made decisions, and the decisions for the scenarios vary greatly. And so, there, there's no right answer. In a sense, we're looking at the, the opportunity to open under Plan B, if that is it, that we feel is most feasible, given the lack of information and uncertainty.
Thank you. And, and that would lead to my, my second question, which was, if you look at, you know, the, the governor's poll that, that he put out, you saw 29% of families hoping for just remote instruction, 28% hoping for a blended Plan B, and 34% hoping for full-time face-to-face. If we find that for the first two or three months of school, only 30% or 40% of our students want to be there full-time, and 30% want to be remote completely, can, can we adjust to allow students who want to be in the building full-time, more than a week and then two off? Is that, is that something that we could do?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, that can happen. And that's one of the considerations, is starting at a place where it would seem to be easier to increase face-to-face, if that's possible, given the number of students of social distancing requirements. Again, if Plan B is the, the direction the governor sends us, there is no reason that after a period of time with monitoring, there cannot be adjustments. There, there will need to be monitoring and assessment of how things are working. And as indicated with the, the implementation test, one of the considerations was, how easy would it be to move from Plan A to Plan B to Plan C, with B being in the middle, of course? That consideration, again, is one that requires monitoring, assessment, and frankly, we may not have choices. We, we may, you may be forced because of decisions made by Department of Health and Human Services and the governor to move to a more restrictive plan. There is the, the qualification under the Department of Health and Human Services direction that school districts may implement a more restrictive plan than directed to open under by the governor, but we may not open under a less restrictive plan. And so, there, there is some consideration for flexibility there as well, moving to more restrictive. That is allowed, but less restrictive is not.
I just would like to note, I mean, this is an impossible discussion, and it's so polarizing, and you have people on both sides of it, there isn't a lot of in-between, and I just want to applaud, you know, again, this is going to be determined by what the governor sends down to us. And so, understanding that you are ahead of the curve, you have options, you're having conversations, so when that determination occurs, we're going to be able to start moving and planning. And I think it's important that the community knows that. We hear you, you know, the survey's been out today, it's really important, we need to know where our families stand, and, and what's going to work for you. But just know, the amount of work that is occurring in these groups to prepare for whatever 2020, 21 looks like. And just thank you to the administrators, to everyone that's been surfing on each of these groups, because this is such a hard conversation, there are no right answers, and we're without roadmap. So just thank you for the part that you've been putting in, in very uncertain circumstances.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dravenbach, go ahead, sir.
If, if, if we implemented Plan B, and three months from now, in September, October, whatever, things cleared up, and the governor said, you know, everything's okay now, would we, could we all go back to school?
If he, yes, sir, if he moved to Plan A, or, I can't imagine this, but perhaps it is a possibility, that there are no restrictions, then absolutely, yes, sir. We, we are limited by the restrictions that will come from the plan that the governor will select and will be directed to follow.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Burns, following up on Nelson's point, that was kind of my next question, that, you know, we've also heard from a lot of families that don't want to put their kids back in, back into school, and want to do the remote learning. If we're going to go with a plan, would it, would it not make sense to have the individual schools kind of speak to their families to determine if they plan on sending those kids back? You know, my worry is, and I understand, you know, two, two to three months down the road, we look at the numbers, and some families are not sending them back. But if we're in a situation where we can actually, you know, 30 to 40% of the families are already choosing not to do that, I think that makes our decision a lot easier in terms of, of abiding by Plan B. So I don't know how long that process would take, but I think it's something that it's at least willing to explore, where we should be willing to explore.
Yes, you're exactly right, Mr. Wortman. In fact, what we're talking about this evening is a district response. We, we have to have that in order to handle the logistics for transportation, child nutrition services, supporting remote instruction. At every school, the principal and their, and their staff are going to have to determine who's going to come and who is not going to come, whether it's staff and/or students, to organize their classes, to organize the, the face-to-face component. And we, we can't know that until we get a little further into the process. And I, I really have struggled with this, we all have. This, this part, the determination of the scenario under which we'd open if, if Plan B comes, truly is the linchpin. Everything is connected and held together by this. And so, as we, as we get closer to opening, parents are going to have to work with schools, and, and principals, and teachers will have to work with parents and kids to organize, as they would anyway, with the additional variable of who's going to come for face-to-face, and who's, who's not comfortable. And so, they'll have to work with that, and that'll have to be assessed on an ongoing basis. The other piece of this, for the virtual school option, New Hanover County Schools does not have a virtual school. We have Mosley that has some virtual courses, but to have a separate virtual school is something that, in the recommendations for this evening, you'll, you'll see that on Friday, at that meeting, we will ask if the board will direct us to pursue the application for a separate virtual school, which will take time to get up and running, in order to be sure that all the families can be served. There may be families who say, I, I just don't want to come back at all, not even the first semester, I just want to take a year off and do virtual. There's going to, there will be a range of, of feelings, and, and, and the way that folks would like to respond to this. And that is another option that needs to be put on the table and made available, it will take some time to develop. So, yes, sir, you're, you're right on point, Mr. Wortman.
And, and just my last follow-up question, I promise. Have we thought kind of outside the box in terms of providing maybe instruction, kind of unique instructional areas? For example, you know, we have, I don't know what the governor's going to tell us, you know, it would be nice to know, but we'll find out whenever he tells us. But, you know, look at some of our gyms, I don't know if they'll have PE, but able to break some spaces and some of those gyms up for learning, the possibility of maybe renting some trailers for, you know, some of those schools downtown, you know, maybe the Alderman area, the Snipes area, the Forest Hills area, the Freeman area, finding some additional classroom spaces for some of those areas. Have those possibilities been explored?
Yes, sir, there's been discussion about that, and tying that to transportation creates an interesting conversation as well. But yes, the, the use, the creative use of available space is a conversation, and you'll hear a little bit about that from operations when, when they're presenting.
Dr. Burns?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you're, you're saying that, at this point, Scenario Two is being suggested, just because it's, the implementation of any of these is going to be so difficult. That's the one that you can see happening, that you can see happening, without having so much confusion, I guess you could say, with as far as resources and everything that would go into putting this together?
Yes, Ms., yes, ma'am, yes, Ms. Justice, that's the case. Trying to keep the most simple solution that we can, that we feel most comfortable, given the limitations that you'll hear as we go through operations and health, because there's a lot more to come. This is just the first part this evening.
Okay.
Scenario Two seems to be the one that we feel most comfortable, that would be feasible for us to implement at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, unless, Dr. Smith, Ms. Brinson, you have more?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for your hard work and for the presentation.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
For operations, Eddie Anderson and Dave Spencer are the leads there, and they're going to provide an update.
Have you been abandoned, Mr. Anderson?
I'm sorry, yeah.
So have you been abandoned by?
I thought David, I'd take, I'll take the heat. But, yes, the operations group consists of Dave Spencer as my co-chair, we had representatives from the K-12 schools, maintenance, transportation, and child nutrition, and I'm going to fight with this mask the whole time. But I, I, I would, before I answer the questions here, I would like to say that the very first thing that we recognize, it is, it is an incredibly complex task. And the trouble is, we don't have all the information we need to make firm decisions. You know, just like you've been discussing, we don't know if the governor's going to say Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C. Even if the governor says Plan B, we don't know how many parents will, will choose to come back. And, and they're probably looking to us to say, well, what's the, what's the scenario? And then I can decide to come back. So it's kind of the chicken and the egg. It, it is very difficult, and the, the reason that ultimately Scenario, or one of the reasons Scenario Two was chosen, is it does give us some flexibility to respond to those, those unknowns. You know, if we, if we open up and we're alternating every three weeks, and we find that 40% of the children are choosing remote learning, then maybe that offers us an opportunity to go to alternating weeks every other week. Any of the other scenarios made it very difficult to transition, you know, between the plans or within, within a given plan, so. And, and I think when we talk about the first question, 50% maximum capacity and required social distancing, that is the challenge under, under Plan B. Under Plan B, not all the students can be in the building. And unless you have all the students in the building, there will be childcare issues, there'll be social distancing requirements, and other, other challenges that we've got to overcome. When they talk about 50% mac, maximum capacity, they're really talking about the building occupancy? So it's not how we normally think of capacity. When that, when that term is used, we're thinking student capacity. And, but what this is referring to is actually the, the stated fire occupancy of an assembly space within the building, or the, the entire building. So if there's, in, in your auditorium, if there's a stated, if there's a placard on the wall that says you can have 600 people in there, that is now limited to half of that, or 300. If there is not a plaque on the wall with a stated fire capacity or occupancy, then you take the building square footage, and it's 12 people per thousand. Well, we know that our buildings are not, they don't have stated fire occupancy for the entire building. We do have some assembly areas that will follow. But when you take that 12 people per thousand, and it's many, it's much more than, than the number of people we're going to be able to fit in the building and comply with social distancing. So that's really not what's limiting us. It's a, it's really going to, what's going to limit us is the six-foot social distancing within the building. We have, I've participated in numerous Zoom meetings, webinars, and we're actually preparing some guidance for the principals, where we take different spaces throughout the building, obviously, starting with classrooms, and we, we look at six-foot social distancing with various shapes, sizes, and furniture. You can social distance and get... You can social distance and get maybe sixteen people, sixteen students in the classroom with individual desks and chairs, but that number will be much less if you have three-foot square tables. I mean, the number, obviously you could take, you could, because you're, you're, normally you could put four, four children around that table, and now you're limited to one. So there are a lot of different scenarios. And believe it or not, I mean, we have a lot of different shapes of furniture and styles of furniture and shapes of tables. And all the different shapes we have looked at, we have illustrations as to how many we can, we can put around that table. And then we have illustrations as to how many we could put in a classroom. And it's hovering right around fifty, maximum sixty percent, you know, of a, of a typical classroom. So that's really, it's the social distancing that's really going to, you know, drive how many students we can have in school under Plan B, if that's what the governor chooses. Transportation, we actually got a little bit of relief under transportation. Originally, we were, we were told we had the six-foot distance and our social distance on a bus. So a normal seventy-two passenger bus would have somewhere between nine and twelve students, depending on who you asked. We have now had some additional guidance under the most recent executive order. The governor has said that middle school and high school students are required to wear masks. And if they're wearing a mask, you can seat one student per seat. And siblings are now allowed to sit together. So at the very least, we could get twenty-four students on a seventy-two passenger bus. And possibly more, if we have siblings, of course. In the elementary school level, the governor did not require masks. But we have that option, you know, as a school district. And I, and I would, I would say, we, we highly recommend that our elementary students wear masks on the bus, because transporting non-students on a seventy-two passenger bus, we could probably provide them all Ubers, and at the end of the year, we'd save money. The, if we can go to twenty-four, we really think that the, the Scenario, Scenario Two is feasible transportation-wise. We will have to make some adjustments. We're going to be looking strongly at our, at our walk zones. And if a student can, we may limit student pickup if, if they can safely walk or ride a bike to school. Obviously, we're not going to ask them to cross Oleander or Carolina Beach Road. But if you can safely get to your school on secondary routes where there's a safe connection to your school through the neighborhood, then we, we will be, you know, making those changes and recommendations. We also, because of the reduced number of students, we, we might very likely have to double up routes. So we want our routes to be extremely efficient and extremely quick. We, we did a survey, and there was less than one and a half percent, or less than one and a half percent of the people that rode the bus had to walk more than a half mile to the bus stop. So we've been providing almost door-to-door service. And to be more efficient and to speed up these bus routes, we're going to have to limit the number of bus stops. So just like if you live within that one and a half mile walk zone and you can safely walk to school, we may also be limiting the number of bus stops and asking you to walk a little further to get to your bus stop. So those are the things that we're looking at. We have been studying a lot of the different, we've been studying route possibilities with the, with the different scenarios. In many cases, to, to meet some of the scenarios that we've looked at, you would probably look, be looking at switching from a two-tier system to as much as a, you know, four to six-tier system, meaning we could have as many as three different start times for elementary schools, multiple start times for middle school and high school. Obviously, the, the, you know, distraction disruption that would cause is, you know, we ruled those scenarios out. So we, the other thing we've been looking at is, you know, how students are being fed. Mentioned before, not having all the information. Right now, we're still operating under the Summer Food Service Program. That runs through the end of August, so at least we know when school starts. All children eighteen years of younger will be able to receive free breakfast and lunch. We have requested and received for waivers for schools that are not in the eligible areas. The big question is, will the Summer Food Service Program continue throughout the next year, or will we go back to the National Lunch Program? The difference is, Summer Food Service obviously allows us a lot more flexibility in feeding those students that aren't in school that day or that week. We're, we're still waiting for that answer, and we're trying our best to continue the Summer Food Service Program. More specifically, in terms of our service, we are recommending more of a grab-and-go breakfast menu. We want students to come into school, go through the serving line, or, or either hit remote points of sale throughout the school, and pick up those breakfasts, go to class, and they can eat breakfast. For lunch, we're looking, the, the, what we would recommend right now is grades six through twelve, they come through the serving line, and we're providing individually packaged meals that they would go back to their classroom and eat. We would work with the school's staff, teachers, and custodians in picking that up. But it would be, we would be using all disposable products, all meals would be individually packaged, and we would probably have some sort of pre-order system in place, so that we would know, you know, which meals go to which, which school, which classroom and which teacher. If we're permitted, we're hoping to provide a curbside grab-and-go meal distribution for those students that are not in school that day or that week. With school back in session, we don't have the ability to use our school buses, but at the very least, we could operate, we think we can operate a, a curbside grab-and-go meal program. How and how often will facilities and buses be cleaned and sanitized? We, we're already doing that. We have written procedures for our custodial services. This summer, we're using this opportunity to provide additional training. We implemented a Safe School Program. We're requiring training through that program for all custodial positions. And then we're bringing our building managers in for in-person training as well. We're also, we've also already ordered and in many cases have in-stock in the warehouse additional supplies and products. We are following all of the CDC guidelines, and any of the products that we are using are approved by the EPA for COVID-19. We're also looking at our custodial schedules and, you know, to, to maximize the number of custodians that we have at the school each day, looking at the possibility of converting part-time positions to full-time positions to provide maximum coverage. We are looking for custodians during, throughout the school day to clean those common areas, those heavy traffic areas, hallways, restrooms, get the handrails. We're looking at buses, we're looking at having them wiped down by the driver between routes. Again, just hitting those heavy, high-use areas, heavy-touch areas. And then after the morning run and after the afternoon run, we'll do a deeper cleaning and disinfecting. We're in the process now of purchasing some handheld sprayers or misters that we can actually disinfect the bus in about thirty seconds. So that's, are there any questions?
What about classrooms, classroom space?
Well, we're.
And disinfecting those spaces. Do you have a, a plan for that?
There'll be multiple layers of that. Our custodians will be cleaning and disinfecting classrooms on a daily basis. We also have purchased the sprayers or misters for use in the school, so custodians can disinfect those classroom spaces at the end of the day. In the middle and high school levels, we're looking at possibly teachers wiping down at least the horizontal surfaces of the desk between class changes. So while custodial support is working on the, the, the rest of the school building, the common areas, teachers could wipe down the desk between class change.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
That sounds like that's a lot of disinfectant and a lot of wipes needed. Are we worried about, especially depending on what the rest of the country does, are we worried about supply chain for those types of disinfecting solutions to be able to keep up with some of the things you're talking about?
Well, we do, and that's certainly a consideration in our purchases. We've noticed that a lot of the things we've been looking at have been backordered, and they can't give you a confirmation on delivery date. But with the, with the sprayers and the disinfecting that we're using, we've gone with the company that provides those and has been providing those. We buy them in bulk. They're in the custodial rooms, it's, it's the operations center. So it's a, it's a concentrated product that we buy in bulk, and we currently have quite a bit of that stocked at the schools and stocked in the, in the, in our warehouse. And those, that product works with the, the sprayers that we're using. So it's a good question and definitely something that we will continue to watch as we move forward with, with either of these plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Spencer, for your work. Next, we'll hear from the Health Work Group, Julie Varnum and Anthony Manzo have been addressing some of those critical questions that are listed. Ms. Varnum.
Thank you. And Mr. Manzo has joined us via Zoom as well. So first of all, like the other committees that have spoken, we created our membership so that we would have multiple voices, different stakeholders around the table. So for us, we included Mr. Manzo, as shared, as Director for HR. We had principals from each of the different, principals or assistant principals from each of the different grade spans. We included our Assistant Director for New Hanover County Public Health, which is Ms. Carla Turner. The Director for Student Support also included community partners from Coastal Horizons as our partners with our Wilmington Health Access for Teens clinics and our high schools, also a large provider of our mental health services. We also had supports from, other supports from HR, and we had support from finance. In addition, we had a service provider specialist with a special education who works with low-incidence populations or most vulnerable populations of students with medical needs. So overall, our goal was to support overall health and well-being of children, adolescents, families, and the community. So you've, you've heard kind of how we pulled our team together. We started with gathering all of the impacts of the questions. Our questions are, how will staffing needs and impact be identified and addressed? How will vulnerable students and staff be supported? When, how, and by whom will screening occur? And then how will students and staff exhibiting symptoms at screening or during the day be supported and by whom? So in looking through these, we decided that we would, from all of our perspectives, just launch into brainstorming sessions and really just have a, a, a kind of a thought dump on anything you can think of that, that might be a question, a concern, or a priority consideration. So we studied the guidance document and the toolkit, and then started identifying the challenges, because we knew we weren't going to immediately have answers. And then, then looking at how we could potentially prioritize considerations. We quickly realized that the guidance document and the toolkit really aren't practical, especially given how we have our students in the building, how we have the staff in the building, what we need to really do to have the number of folks that we have. So I'll go through the pieces that we considered, and I'm sure there will be more questions. So childcare options became the first issue for us, really thinking about how are our staff who have children who, my glasses are fogging up, would have children on different schedules potentially? How will we support those needs? Especially if we have partial schedules. We talked about substitute teachers and really how we would want to identify those substitute teachers for certain schools, so that they aren't cross, potentially cross-contaminating from site to site. We talked about cross-training of support staff. So support staff in the, in the, in the building that may not have a class roster or, or a class of students in front of them, how can they be flexible to support with screening or covering other roles so screening can occur? We talked also about how we were going to have employees participate in the screening process, either as additional folks on a bus, so that screening can occur when students are, are getting on the bus, or collecting the attestations from parents that screening has occurred. And then also, how we will do that at school entrance. So we immediately decided that we needed to reach out to staff for a staff survey, and we also wanted the, the survey for families on their intentions and their, and their, their comfort level for returning to school. With our staff, really asking them their willingness to be screeners with PPE. So, and the PPE, of course, the personal protective equipment. Our, our next part about identifying vulnerable students and, and staff. So there are options for staff accommodation plans based on health needs. Those are self-report. We aren't seeking those staff out, but there's the option for that. We also wanted to, in, in a, working through identifying vulnerable populations, make sure that we aren't creating more vulnerable populations. So supporting universal social emotional learning for mental health needs immediately. In the vulnerable populations, we started looking at what additional types of materials our staff might need for different types of students or different needs of students. We identified that we will need clear masks for many of our students. Students with autism that have social and communication needs, students with hearing impairment, students with a history of trauma, may really need to be working with staff when they can see their mouth. Clear face masks or screens. Additional personal protective equipment for those staff who would be working with students on more, more personal needs, more physical needs, such as toileting supports or other medical needs that they may have. Many of our students need to be fed. We have students that have one-on-one RNs in school for their medical fragility. So really talking about how we would support those staff, knowing that we would want to keep, keep some physical distance between our most mul, most vulnerable medically fragile populations from the general population. And so training our staff on symptoms and, and screening information. We talked a lot about providing parents with some expectations, providing them with an idea of, of what it's going to look like in the school building, so that they can work with their students, their children, in preparation. We do have access to quite a few public service announcements through Department of Health and Human Services, but we really wanted to make something a little bit more personal. So our communications team is working with all of us on creating those videos to share with families and the community on how we're preparing for return. And talking about the simplest things of following the three Ws, but then also, you know, teaching our kids, if you're going out in public places, looking at the arrows on the floors, looking at the lines for six-foot distancing. Consider that social distancing or physical distancing is, is going to have to be in place, but we still need to make sure we have socialization for proper development. One of the, the big things that our, our team talked a lot about was making sure that we weren't, you know, creating counterproductive and inappropriate impacts from lack of appropriate service and potentially not addressing mental health concerns for students when they aren't able to be in the building. And they really do need to be in the building and be served by folks that are trained to support their needs. We covered a lot of ground with IEP service delivery, really focusing on the students service delivery, really focusing on the students with special needs. And then, supporting our staff and students with movement activities. If we're going to have to limit movement of our students and cross-movement from groups and potentially have zones in recess so that they aren't merging with other classes, we need to probably, we need to incorporate some movement supports for the students and staff in the building. It's a brain, a teaching with the brain and mind technique anyway, and it might just be something that we need to do more frequently during this time. Making sure that we're providing staff with guidelines on materials not being shared from student to student, but then also those that are specific, student-specific materials, making sure that those are kept away so that they're not easily grabbed by other kids. We spent some time talking about our folks who are more susceptible to medical conditions now more than ever, simply because of the health concerns, and really working with our administrators, having, as Dr. Burns and I were talking about today, he suggested an administrator hotline, really having maybe an access point, one access point for administrators for their quick questions, but then also having that same for our, for student needs, for staff needs. And so, in moving through some of the protocols that we want to make sure we develop, we definitely want to keep at the forefront that we need the input of our staff and families on their comfort levels. We need to make sure that we are balancing the health needs, the physical, the social, the emotional. And in talking with our families and providing them, giving them information through either public service announcements, through our shows that we put onto our NHCS Television, helping them understand screening their children prior to the bus stop or coming to school, and helping them remember or realize that we're in this together and we really want to see their kids at school. I think that we need to have that as a reminder. Overall, we spent a lot of time talking about what we didn't think would work and identifying more and more questions, but we are taking every opportunity to operationalize these plans and tools as best we can, knowing that they need to be implemented with fidelity, meaning that they need to be implemented well every time, and we have an accountability in that. So overall, in summary, we focused a lot on making sure that we can flexibly adjust plans for students based on their own needs and also the outcomes of our community health needs. Again, avoiding inappropriate counterproductive impact from a lack of appropriate service, mitigating the risk as best feasible, and then realizing we still have more questions than answers. How many staff do we really need for screening? How many isolation spaces do we need for students who are exhibiting symptoms? How long do they need to be out? When can they return? What do, what symptoms are going to carry over for days and weeks, if not longer? And then, the major one, what are childcare options and what are funding options for that if everybody isn't in school consistently? Do you have any questions?
Just a couple of things first. Thank you very much. I know this is a difficult undertaking. One comment first, I would like to just say, you know, with mental health being an issue that you're focused on, I appreciate that. That's a big concern of mine, when our students finally do go back and they can't get that hug from that teacher they've been missing all year, you know, they can't run together at recess. It's so difficult today, and this slight return to normalcy looks so different. It's going to be a challenge. It's going to hurt. So I do appreciate your awareness there. With regards to staffing, I know you and I had a discussion about what happens when a teacher is symptomatic and they've been here for two weeks or three weeks. They're new to the district. They're from out of state. They don't have leave. Could you talk about the policy that will allow our staff to work remote, to be taken care of, even if they have not acquired that leave, because we absolutely do not want them coming in if they are symptomatic?
Right, right. So we know that there are still a lot of questions, but we are also reviewing information from the Families First Coronavirus Act for leave options for staff. And we do have, in that, we have flexibility and leniency in our attendance procedures for our staff. So I don't know if Mr. Manzo wants to, since that's more of a human resources function, if he wants to add in on that?
That'd be great. Thank you.
So what I would say is that, yes, what is available now is the Federal Families First Corona Act, which would allow folks to have two weeks of leave with pay. And again, we relied on the principals in our group to be able to work with staff, teachers, and whatnot, that are new to the district, that haven't accumulated leave, to come up with a process for them to be able to work remotely. Even if it's not an instructional position, there are plenty of other things that folks can do to assist the instructional folks to be able to work remotely. So I don't think that's going to be as big of an issue. What I was going to say is that there was a lot of information here tonight. A lot of the groups wrestled with a lot of information and provided some scenarios. With our group, which is the health group, our jumping point is from the students. What students are coming back to school face-to-face? What student's going to be remote? And as far as the staff goes, the employees goes, what employees will come back face-to-face? What employees will request remote option? And then, what employees will not return at all? And we'll get some of that information coming back in the survey that's gone out today, but I think there's going to be a caveat with those informations, because it's going to have a dependence. It depends on what the governor says, how the schools in the state are going to open, and then from there, that will give us some information and give the people information to make better choices as far as being able to move our group from A to B and get the students back in school or back remote.
Thank you.
What is, I think what is sort of, I mean, this is all overwhelming, and I know I'm just echoing what everyone else is saying. I just completely applaud the work that has been done thus far. This task is enormous, and, you know, when you hook on one piece, another piece unhooks. I think we can all recognize that you need about six more months of planning to be able to kind of get to a point where you think this will work. But the one thing that I think is, it's kind of rattling around in my head is, how do you track the students in group one, two, or three? It's hard enough to track them normally, whether they're in school or not, but who will be responsible for that, to determine who's supposed to be in school, who's not, who are, you know, are the siblings coming, are they not? That seems to be rather complicated.
If I could respond to that, Madam Chair. At the building level, the principal and his or her team are going to have quite the challenge, and that's one of them. They're going to have to organize their school around whatever scenario and schedule we end up with. And they will organize their classes. They'll determine groups. I'm certain that flexibility is going to be key. We're all going to have to be very flexible as we work through this. And again, trying to limit the number of variables was important as we thought about scenarios. That job in itself of determining who's going to be in which group and dealing with attendance is going to be no small matter. We have to take attendance by other requirements, not just for those for face-to-face instruction, but those in remote instruction as well. And it's going to be a very different matter than we've ever addressed. And right now, we don't have procedures for that. We'll be talking with principals and directors tomorrow, giving them an update, a debrief from what our discussion and your questions are tonight, and begin to move toward supporting them. We have to, at the district level, go through as much as we can in terms of support, but it will then move to the building level for them to execute, for the principals, for the administrators, working with their teams. And frankly, I'm thinking about that a lot. It is on my mind a great deal. And just, not to extend the conversation too much, but just imagine in any one of our secondary schools, what will be required to screen every person who walks into that building, with just a third of the kids coming into the building. There are questions that have to be asked, temperatures have to be taken, someone has to deal with that aspect. Someone has to deal with the students that by their response to the questions can't be allowed in the building, or their temperature check indicates they have a fever and can't be allowed in the building. You have to deal with that. So again, the more students that we have to screen coming in, the more challenging it becomes. It does. It all interlocks. And one of the most impressive things to me regarding the updates, and we've been meeting and meeting and meeting and talking about this a lot, is how deep and how quickly the work groups have identified the many challenges. And Mr. Bowyer asked a question earlier about feasibility. I think you're getting a sense now of the struggle with feasibility. Can we do it to some degree? Yes. I can't tell you to what degree. We know what the requirements are, and especially in the health area. It has struck me that it feels like we're being asked to provide a health provider function rather than an education function, especially with regard to the screening aspect. And given the number of students coming into a school, and adults, the adults have to be screened as well. The feasibility becomes less with the greater number coming into the building on a daily basis. And so, this team, they are concerned about vulnerable students and staff. They are concerned about childcare for folks and the impact. You heard several times so far, and we still have communication and finance to go, that we talked about, we talked about, we talked about. A lot of, some of the decisions are being made, but right now, again, everything, because it interlocks, asks the next question. It begs the next question. And health especially, everything's important, but at the end of the day, the health aspect is absolutely critical, and we've got to find a way to get that right. And it's a great burden, but health is key as we go forward. Thank you, Ms. Varnum, Mr. Manzo. Are there other questions for them?
No question per se, but I would like to say, they did a great, everybody's worked so hard. I'm not trying to in any way disrespect the situation, but I really wish that there had been teachers on at least two of those three committees, if not all three. That's just really important, because they're the, actually, they're the ones that are going to be in there every day with those kids and actually really are going to be, you know, when the rubber hits the road, they're the ones with the biggest responsibility.
Ms. Justice, I'd like to add to what you just shared. That is true. Teachers are on the ground, and they'll be working directly with the students. The execution, the implementation, and determining the feasibility, working through the logistics, is going to reside with the leaders in the district and in the buildings. And the teacher voice is critical. I agree with that very strongly. We have year-round schools opening in less than a month. There's not enough time, and I agree with you. It would be good to have more voices. I do have confidence that principals had conversations with their school families, with their teachers, their staff members, and others. And in the interest of time and trying to work through this, that is the method that has been used at this point. There'll be other opportunities for us to gather additional information, but I frankly am feeling a great deal of pressure, knowing that we've got schools opening on August 4th, and we have still many more questions than we do answers and need to move forward. So your point is well taken, and I would agree with it.
Dr. Burns, somebody once said that there's no way we can get there from here. You know, that's the right thing to say tonight. But from watching and spending time with our teachers and our administration, I think we can do it. And there'll be some, there'll be some boogers in there somewhere that we run into, but we'll get through it. We'll be okay.
Yes, sir. I would agree with you.
We'll get through it.
We'll get through it. Okay, if there are no other questions from Ms. Varnum, communication and finance are providing support to the three work groups. And Ann Gibson is going to join us remotely. Ms. Gibson, can you give an update, please, on communication support?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the district's school reopening communications efforts to date. Communication staff has been meeting and brainstorming and developing our initial communications plan, and we will soon, probably within the next week, hopefully be meeting with the Family Communications Committee for input and guidance as we move forward. Our goal is to answer questions, essentially, it's to answer questions before they're asked. And as you have already heard, we have a lot of questions to answer before we can get to that point, but we're trying to push as much information as we can out initially, and then we'll continue to do that well into the fall and well into the school year. As we've mentioned, we launched two surveys today, one for employees and one for students and families. We'll have about a week, allow about a week for responses and accumulate that input, and then put that back into our planning efforts. We've also posted a community input form on our website, on the homepage, so that families and employees can ask questions throughout the summer break. And what we intend to do with that input is incorporate it into an FAQ document that we're building on the website. Our website is, we're really relying on our website to be our central hub of information for everything related to reopening. And so, we've built out a section off of the homepage, and we're building that information with the guiding documents from the state. We've also, we're starting to build our district plans as they are developed. And then, as Ms. Varnum was mentioning, we're building health and safety information, specific COVID-19 resources, and a video library for education purposes to help people understand the three Ws and other social distancing, other aspects of returning to school, and health and safety protocols that we'll have to follow. We've also increased our Spanish translation support for the summer, and while that doesn't happen immediately as our communication goes out, our intent is to have it happen much more quickly than it has in the past. And we're also, so we're trying to provide that support, and we're also using the state resources. The state is providing a lot of resources in terms of Spanish-language videos and documents, so we're also providing those. And we are creating printed materials for our families that have limited internet access, and we're going to make those available at our schools and at our meal service locations over the summer. As I said, we're working with Student Support Services to develop those videos, and we intend to utilize the YouTube channel or social media to push those out, and also New Hanover Schools TV channel for educational programming. We're, in addition, we're encouraging our families to make sure that their email and phone contact information is up to date, because we'll be using email and the Connect Five Mass Notification System for the more urgent messaging that has to be sent out closer to the start date of school. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your effort.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And for finance... And for finance, Mary Hazel Small's going to talk about something we likely won't have enough of, money.
Thank you. I just wanted to, to provide a little bit of information about the additional funding that we have to address these needs. Um, our, as Dr. Burns said, our, our staff is working with other committees to sort of, um, determine what, what the needs are and, and what, how we might have to use our current budget differently, and how we can also use the additional funds that have been provided. So, this, um, handout that's up on the screen shows you that, um, to date, we've received or appropriations have been approved for us to receive almost $10 million in additional state, mostly federal funding. Um, it came in three different categories, and I'm not going to go through every line of this, but I just wanted to kind of give you the big picture. The, initially, we had, um, the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, which gave us, um, just over $500,000 to get started, um, which is where we, we paid for those initial, um, cleaning supplies, the extra cost of the summer feeding program, you know, anything that we needed to do it during that initial emergency time period, and that funding ended at the end of June. The federal funds, um, there's two categories. There's the CARES Act, K-12 Emergency Relief Fund, and we are, were appropriated, um, 6.1 million that will be used over two years. And, um, the initial budget distribution is shown there, the majority of the funds going towards, um, special education, compensatory services, computers, and then the sanitation and nutrition, um, equipment and supplies that we need. But there's, there's other items listed as well in terms of remediation, um, curriculum. Um, we, these funds are also shared with private schools, um, on a proportionate basis. And, um, we're reserving some funds for stabilization, because we do expect our funding to be reduced over the next couple of years, and so that portion would probably be used in the second year, and any funds not needed for the other items we've been discussing, um, this evening would possibly be used for that, that purpose. So, that's kind of our, our backup. Additionally, the state legislature, um, the state received Federal CARES Act, and then the state legislature met and determined specific appropriations for schools. And so, that funding came to, is coming to us in stay grants, but it's really federal funding. Um, a big, over a million dollars for the summer learning program that will, um, be up and running the three weeks prior to school starting. Um, that's a remote program. And then, um, we received 1.3 million for school nutrition, but the federal funding restrictions on that were such that we weren't able to use as much of it as we had hoped. The good news is, we had federal reimbursements from federal summer feeding, so you just can't, you can't get reimbursed twice. So, um, we are using what was allowable. We were able to offset some of the transportation costs related to, to the summer feeding program and, um, or the continued feeding program. And then, the state legislature recently extended that money till December. So, it is possible that we'll be able to spend some of it next, next semester, but we'll have to see. We also received technology grants specific for devices for students and staff and, um, Wi-Fi devices for, for the community and for families that, that didn't have access to Wi-Fi. So, um, there's a few other grants that are pending, but I just wanted you to, to be aware of the resources that are coming our way. It's certainly not enough to do all the things that, that were described earlier, but we will do our best to prioritize and use the money wisely. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could ask one question, Ms. Mall.
Certainly.
Each county also receives some CARE Act funding. Could you talk just a bit about that and anything that we know about New Hanover County's CARE funding?
The other counties, I do know that we receive, that statewide, um, there's, um, I think a little bit of this is state, but most of it is CARES funding, which is $637 million. And so, the amount that we were talking about is the, is the portion we received, and some of it is allotted for pupil, but some of it is allotted based on need. And so, there are some of the CARES Act programs that we are not eligible for, based on the, um, availability of funding in our county.
And in addition to that, New Hanover County, separate from New Hanover County Schools, receives some support from CARES.
That is correct. And, and that wasn't on, on my summary, but they, um, some, not every county, but some communities did receive some direct support, and that hopefully they're, um, some of that will possibly be used for some connectivity and some i- issues to support the community. I, I know there's discussion of that, I don't know if it's been finalized.
Great. Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Mall? Okay.
So, the, you just, the, the federal money, that's over two years, the state money, you're saying we have until the end of the year for all of it? The state money, we have until the end of the year for all of it, or is that just specifically to food service?
The, um, that first state money, it's gone, that $600,000, but the, the other state funds will be through that, in that third section through December, and the federal funding that was the direct grant to us, um, we'll have it for two years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'd like to summarize, if I might, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. This evening, we have shared with you updates from the work groups, and, um, it's clear that although a lot of work has been done, there's much more work to be done. As I mentioned earlier, year-round schools will open August 4th. We have a great deal that we need to accomplish between now and then. We've been working very hard and very diligently and consistently since we've gotten the guidance from DPI, Department of Health and Human Services, which has changed, we, it is changing as, as we go forward. Where we are at this point, and I do appreciate the Board, um, agreeing to have a, a, an interim meeting on Friday, um, this evening, you've received a lot of information. I do not think it's appropriate to ask you to make a decision regarding a scenario. At the meeting on Friday, um, there'll be two items on the agenda at this time. One would be an item for the Board to consider the scenarios, and you have a recommendation that I have made based on the work that's been done, um, for scenario two, for you to consider for action. A separate item will be, um, direction to the staff to complete the required application for a virtual school and bring that back to you for consideration. Part of that application requires that the school have a name, and we have a policy addressing that, we'll have to work through that, um, as well. So, those are the two items for the meeting on Friday that will allow us to begin to, um, move forward at a bit of a quicker pace. If there are any questions at this point, I'd be glad to answer them, or, um, if I'm not able to, we have staff that I'm sure can.
Uh, Dr. Burns?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any expectation that the governor will make his announcement before the opening on August 4th?
No, ma'am. In the press conference that was held, I believe it was week before last, you have to forgive me, the time kind of escapes me at the moment, uh, under the circumstances. His remark was that he would be making a decision in a few weeks. He further said that if you needed to open school before the decision, that opening remotely is a possibility. And I don't want to go too far down that road, but there's a, a technical matter in the legislation, um, regarding our calendar that does not allow a school to open remotely until after the first five days, which is likely to be addressed this week by the General Assembly. So, at this point, no, ma'am, I, I do not have any idea when the governor may make his decision, and in, in the absence of his decision, we have to have Plan A, B, and C, um, and we're working as hard as we can toward that end.
Well, if that is the case, when we meet on Friday, will we be discussing what plan will be put in place on Au- well, you need to know as soon as possible, on August the 4th, um, taking into consideration, you already said it's better to be more restrictive than let up than opposite.
I don't believe on Friday we'll have enough information to do that, Ms. Justice. We can't wait until the very end. At some point later this month, we're likely to need another meeting. The clarification regarding opening remotely, um, because of the, the issue with the law currently, needs to be resolved. So, we, we've still got some questions, and I, I feel certain that we'll be talking again after Friday about year-round schools. Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, for your patience. It's been a long presentation, but I, I do hope you found value in it.
Yeah.
Very much so. Thank you very much. Any further questions? If not, I think everybody here at the BOE Center needs a five-minute break.
Thank you.
So, we will take that and, um, meet back here. Thank you.